The King of the Medford City Council will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Counselor Caviello.
Present.
Counselor Falco.
Present.
Counselor Knight.
Present.
Counselor Scott Pelley.
Present.
Counselor Del Rosso.
Present.
Seven members present and not absent, please rise to salute the flag.
Aye.
Sixteen dash five fifty-five offered by Vice President Longo Kern. Be resolved that the Medford City Council requests that the city solicitor assist the council in changing the six-month demo delay for historic properties to a one-to-two-year demo delay. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, President Del Rosso. During our budget deliberations, we had the Historic Commission and the Historic District Commission before us, and we had a couple nights of discussion with regards to a number of issues. One being this six-month demo delay that we have on the books currently. Discussion was had with regards to extending that and asking for their opinion on it. I think that was the Historic Commission. We asked Ryan Haywood for his opinion, and I think that will be coming to us shortly with regards to how we can go about and why we should go about extending this demo delay. I believe that a number of cities and towns have a one and some even a two-year demo delay, and I think that's something that the city of Medford definitely needs to look into. We were told point-blank that six months is not enough time to hire a consultant and prepare a report, and I think we need to give our Historic Commission more time to do the work that needs to be done so we can preserve these historic homes. So I ask that while we're awaiting Mr. Haywood's report, we also request that the city solicitor begin, because I know he's busy and we are coming upon the summer months, so I ask that we begin making the change to our ordinance so that we can move forward on that sooner than later. I know we have a number of historic properties that ran into this issue. I know there was one on Toro Ave. Obviously, South Street has some historic, I'm sorry, not south, yes, South Street, Toro, in that neighborhood, and there's a number of homes that would qualify for this six-month demo delay. So I ask that the city council go on record requesting that the city solicitor create an update to our ordinance so we can pass that and create a longer timeframe for this demolition delay.
On the motion by Vice President Longo Kern, Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, I too had a conversation with Mr. Ryan Haywood relative to this very same matter, and he and I sat down and he pointed out what sections of the Medford Code of Ordinances he was referring to, where this is a matter that would be a change in our city ordinances. I'd recommend that the matter be referred to our Zoning and Ordinance Subcommittee for a draft piece of paper that can be put together for the council to review.
We have two contradictory motions.
And we can have the solicitor's input at that point as well, I think. He's always more than willing to help out with that stuff, but it seemed very remedial, Mr. President. It was a matter of crossing out six months and replacing it with the appropriate figure that we deem as proper at this point in time as a body.
Thank you. So on that motion, Madam Vice President.
I think we combine the two, and we vote that we do want to increase the demo delay, and then we send it to Subcommittee to make that change.
That's a wise decision, Madam Vice President. So on the motion of Vice President Longo Kern, seconded by Counselor Knight, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries. Sixteen dash five five six offered by Counselor Knight. Be resolved, the city administration adopt and implement a trench identification system where markers would be placed on trench work performed by public utilities for the purpose of holding contractors and public utilities accountable for work performed on our roadways. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I think this is a pretty self-explanatory resolution. Came out of our budget meetings two Saturdays ago when the city engineer explained to us that this is a process and a procedure and a policy in other communities, and it's been met with success, Mr. President. I think it'll allow us the opportunity to identify the trench work that's being done by what public utility, and then we'll be able to hold them accountable. If neighbors have a concern or a question, they can go out and look at the trench identification number. The trench identification plates are coded by color so that you know what type of utility is, whether it's electricity or water, and it allows a little bit easier quality-of-life issues in public service, Mr. President. So I think that this is a good measure. I also believe that it can be done at little or no cost to the taxpayer. So I'd ask my colleagues to support it, and I move for approval.
On the motion approved by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Marks, Counselor Marks.
Mr. President, I think that's an excellent suggestion in trying to solve an issue that this council has been trying to address for a number of years in addressing utility contractors that come into this community and do digging and don't put back the road the way they found it. And I think this is a wise suggestion, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Chair, thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Scott Pelley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too commend my colleague for bringing this in front of us again. I think that it's important. I got two phone calls this week on some public utility work that was done over the last year by National Grid, and now there are two open sinkholes. So we forward that optimistic currents in the morning, and again, I hope this helps us give us an indication in who's not fulfilling their responsibilities as a utility company. Thank you.
On the motion for approval by Counselor Knight, seconded by Counselor Marks, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion passes. Sixteen dash five five seven offered by Counselor Knight. Be resolved, the Park Commission explored possibilities to further diversify recreational opportunities provided at our public parks, including but not limited to horseshoe pits, bocce courts, volleyball courts, shuffleboard courts, street hockey rinks, canoe launches, pitch and putt areas, and body weight exercise equipment, and report back to the council the feasibility of expanding the offerings at our public parks. Counselor Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. One thing I noticed when I drive down the streets of our city is that we have some beautiful parks, some very large parks that take up quite a bit of acreage, but quite frequently we don't see anybody utilizing them. Quite frequently, we don't see anybody there, and I think that part of that has to do with the fact that we don't have diversified options for the residents of this community to participate in. And I think some of these items are low-cost items, like a horseshoe pit or a bocce court or a shuffleboard court, Mr. President, that may bring people to our parks to utilize our open recreational space. I think that it's important that we provide opportunities for the members of our community, children and adults alike, to utilize these public open spaces, Mr. President. And I also think it's important with the discussions that we have here going on with childhood obesity and addiction that we provide opportunities for our community to utilize the services and amenities that we have in place. I'd ask my colleagues to support the resolution and ask for it to be taken in a roll call.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Scott Pelley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great initiative, and I think that it's something that's needed when you have an organized recreational program that we can identify in our community. And I think that the mayor has put together, I believe from what I hear, is a task force looking into recreation in our community. I think that's been echoed throughout our streets and neighborhoods and our parks. And again, I'd like to make an amendment to follow that up to the mayor's office and where we stand with a recreation task force to see initiatives like this follow through with. So if you can make an amendment to that motion.
On the motion of Counselor Knight, as amended and seconded by Counselor Scott Pelley, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, President Del Rosso. I think it's a great idea to look into some options, additional options for our younger people that are using the park, and, oh, well, everybody, I guess. Just looking to see if we can maybe amend it just to get some cost estimates as well, feasibility, cost, I think will help us, you know, figure out what we can add to our parks. I think it's a great idea.
As amended by Vice President Longo Kern, all those, we have a roll call requested. Counselor Marks wants to speak. Counselor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I agree that our parks are underutilized. I believe there's 23 parks. We have the luxury of having a number of open spaces in our community, however, they are not being used to full capacity. It was probably about maybe six, seven months ago, I offered a resolution similar to this with involving the arts, and how do we get the arts throughout the community and not just centralized in one particular area. And I know the city of Lowell has done a tremendous job in refurbishing some of their old parks that were considered drug dens and brought in performing stages at very minimal cost, and had artists do wrought iron work around the park and other things to attract residents back into the park. And they're really a success story, and I would like to, if my council colleague wouldn't mind, amending his particular, I know you didn't limit it to what you put out there, but I think arts would be a great addition to the community. We already have a vibrant arts council and movement in this community, and I think it would go a long way in soliciting their support also. So I would ask if my council colleague doesn't mind to also involve arts and the performing arts within our parks.
So on the motion for approval by Counselor Knight, seconded and amended by Counselor Scott Pelley, further amended by Vice President Longo Kern, Counselor Marks, Chair recognizes Counselor Caviello.
Thank you, Mr. President. President, you know, as I drive around during the summer, I see two or three park instructors with two or three kids. Maybe if we could look into maybe combining the program into maybe fewer parks, fewer parks, so we could get more children there rather than having two kids at a park or three kids at a park, we get them all into maybe one or two or three parks, and with these things, maybe that will be more successful. And, Mr. President, do you know if we'll be getting that grant from the East Cavern shavings that we've gotten in the past to help fund the park instructors? Is that coming forward?
I have no information on that, Counselor. Point of information, Madam Vice President.
We do have a paper before us that's, I did read, there's $10,000 from the same bank, correct, coming this year. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor McGlynn was instrumental in securing that over the years.
Good man.
Chair recognizes Counselor Knight.
Yes, Mr. President, I certainly have no objection to the amendments that were made. I think Counselor Marks's amendment's a great idea, and it made me think about something that he brought up several months ago relative to graffiti walls, where in certain areas and communities, they put up graffiti walls, and they allow people to write graffiti on them to focus their energies and efforts on that side as opposed to on other pieces of property, and I think that that's just a perfect example of how that could come into play. It takes a village, Mr. President. I think the more heads that are at the table, the more minds that get together to see what offerings we can extend to our community to ensure that our parks are operating to capacity is going to be helpful and it's going to improve our quality of life. So I certainly have no problem with any of the amendments that were made, Mr. President. I'd move for approval.
On that motion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Read the amendments, please. Dottie, sorry. Madam Clerk, could we just read the amendments? I didn't know. Can you read the last couple amendments? Counselor Caviello, are you making that an amendment or you just were talking?
Counselor, just me.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was an amendment, because I disagree. Okay, thank you.
Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes, with the vote of seven, affirmative, none, and the negative. Motion passes. Sixteen dash five five eight offered by Counselor Knight. Be resolved that the police department increased the visibility and enforcement of posted speed limits along Arlington Street during the weekday morning and afternoon rush hour periods. Counselor Knight.
Yes, Mr. President. I've gotten a number of calls and complaints, and I actually was walking down the Arlington Street area just a couple of days ago, and several residents in the area have requested that we see more visible enforcement of the posted speed limits. I don't think this is a problem that's exclusive to Arlington Street. I think this is something that's citywide, and I think we could all probably sit here and amend this paper over and over and over again to include all, I don't know, 100-plus miles of street here in the city of Medford. However, there is a need down there, Mr. President, and I've been contacted by individuals in the neighborhood that would like to see some increased visibility, and I am asking for it. So with that being said, I'd ask that the council move for approval.
On the motion approved by Counselor Knight, seconded by Vice President Longo Kern, Madam Vice President.
I second that, that's fine. I do have, I don't believe we received an update. I know we have piles of information to probably still read, but with regards to the speeding, stepping up enforcement is definitely the main way to do it. We want to see, you know, our police officers traverse in different streets where we know there's extra amount of speeding going on, which is a number of streets. But also questions were asked to the chief of police with regards to the speed limit tracker, the signage. I know we have permanent ones on a few of our roads which are working great. I know Elm Street is one that definitely I see speeding being curbed, definitely speeding slows down when people hit that sign. But we have that movable sign that the chief of police did tell us at our Thursday meeting, I believe two weeks ago, stated it was broken. We did ask for how much it would cost, and we asked that the mayor put at least one in the budget so that we can move that around to streets like Arlington Street. I know the last street I got complaints on was Highland Ave, excessive speeding. So I think that's an extremely important tool that the city can use and that we have been without because it's been broken. So I just want to reiterate that, that we purchase one and get the one we have fixed if possible, if it's worth the cost of fixing it versus buying one or two. I think it's something that the council brings up. Once a month, we have a few different streets that are having a speeding problem, and that's something that definitely does help without, you know, the additional manpower or officer to sit there eight hours a day. So I would ask that we, again, ask those questions and purchase one. It is not in the budget to purchase one this year, and I think that, you know, we did request that, and I hope that is changed by next week.
On the motion of Counselor Knight, seconded by Vice President Longo Kern, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Sixteen dash five five nine offered by Counselor Knight. Be resolved that the public utility contractor performing work on Lincoln Road, Crocker Road, underground infrastructure project be required to perform weekly sweeping of the affected roadways. Be it further resolved that all construction of permanent debris and materials be removed from said affected roadway during the period of time that work is not being performed. Counselor Knight.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you very much. If anybody's familiar with the area, Lincoln Road would run from Lawrence Road up to Pilgrim Road, and there is a trench that extends probably that full length, as well as a trench that extends halfway down Crocker Road, Mr. President. And they're doing some infrastructure repairs up there, which is all well and good. However, the work's been going on for an extended period of time. There's dirt and debris and sand and dust all over the vehicles, and at a period of time where the weather is finally getting nice, individuals in this neighborhood are having a difficult time opening their windows during the weekends, Mr. President. Because come Friday around 3:00, the construction crews pack up in their trucks and they drive away, but they leave some pipes and they leave some bobcats and they leave some big piles of dirt on the side of the road, Mr. President. This is a dense residential neighborhood with very small sidewalks, and it's really becoming a quality-of-life issue, Mr. President. So I'd ask that the city administration take the appropriate steps to have the public utility contractor beautify the area while the construction work is going on. We already know that we're going to ask them to leave it in the same pristine condition that it was in before they came here, Mr. President, but I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed. Neighbors are complaining, the neighborhood looks atrocious with the amount of dust and dirt debris that's on the road. Something that needs to be done is the least that the contractor could do based upon the disruption that they're causing the residents in the neighborhood.
On the motion of Counselor Knight, Counselor Caviello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, this is not a problem that's unique to Crocker Road. This happens on many of the other streets in the city where work is being done, and I don't know why either our code enforcement officer isn't out there staying on top of this or why we don't have a clerk of the works who should be doing this and staying on top of these projects and staying on top of these gentlemen who are doing them to make sure that when they leave at night that the road is left proper, and so the neighbors don't have to, it's bad enough that the work is being done, but they don't have to suffer the dust and other things, especially now during the summer when they're out. So if we could find out if this is something that our, we have two code enforcement officers, if this is something that our code enforcement officer can handle, Mr. President.
On the motion of Counselor Knight, all those in favor? All those opposed? Sixteen dash five sixty offered by Counselor Caviello. Be resolved that the Medford City Council sends its condolences to the family of Robert Sarabian. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I've known Mr. Sarabian for many years, and maybe some of our younger people in the room may not know him, but he's a gentleman who was in the community for many years, as the president of the Coeur d'Albany, Craddock Pharmacy, he's a former citizen of the year, and I know he's fellowed over the last few years, but again, as I say, he was a good man for the city of Medford for many years, and his presence in this community has been missed for many years. So if we could hold a moment of silence for him.
Please join in standing for a moment of silence of this deceased Medford citizen. We have a number of papers under suspension. Counselor Knight, suspension of the rules. On the motion of Counselor Knight for suspension of the rules, take papers that were issued under suspension. All those in favor? All those opposed? Before us is a communicate from the mayor, and here to present on the matter is the Finance Director, Ms. Ann Baker. Sixteen dash five sixty-eight under suspension. To the Honorable President and members of the Medford City Council, City Hall, Medford Mass., O2155, to Mr. President and City Councilors, I respectfully request and recommend that your honorable body approve the following end-of-the-year transfers for fiscal year 16. There's a sum total amount of $1,112,000 in various accounts, which I will enumerate unless someone stops me, to pay deficits of that same amount in various accounts that are in deficit. So. On the brief synopsis is that we are taking money from Salary Executive Department, Salary Finance Department, Salary Assessors Department, Non-Contributory Pension, Salary Signal Department, Salary Fire Department, Salary Library, Salary Health, Fringe Compensations, Salary Forestry, Salary Highway, Salary Registrar, Interest on Debt, Utilities, DPW, Utilities Building, Utilities Fire, Cash Aid for Veterans, Streetlights, and Canine Services. So all of those accounts had monies left over them, some substantial, the two most substantial, Salary Fire, $255,000, and Fringe Wage Compensation, $270,000. So those all amounted to $1,112,000. They're going to supplement shortfalls in budgets. Salary Council, $1,800, Treasury Department, $4,200, Salary Law, $2,500, Overtime Police, $416,000, Salary Veterans Office, $1,500, Printing in the Registrar's Office, $11,000, Health, Dental, Life Insurance, $500,000, Medicare reimbursements, $150,000, and insurance for police, $25,000. Here to explain any questions that the councilors may have is Ms. Baker of the city auditor. Yes?
If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them if I can.
Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think for the last, jeez, several months, I've been asking in this budget process that we receive a budget from the administration that not only details the previous fiscal year and the proposed fiscal year, but also has a comparison line by line whether each line is in a deficit or surplus. And this is the exact reason I've been asking this, Mr. President, and I was promised last year by then-budget director Louise Miller that it would be incorporated in this year's budget. And I, as one person, I don't know how my colleagues feel, when I look at a budget, it's helpful to look and say, well, you're asking for an appropriation. Last year, did you spend this full appropriation? If not, why are you asking for the same appropriation? And every year, and we were just at a meeting that we had, a committee of the whole meeting, and before we received this correspondence from the mayor, I brought it up again, and I said, every year, there's roughly $1 million in transfers at the end of the year. Every year would outstay, and sure enough, we get a paper from the mayor, it's $1,112,000. So I was off by $112,000. There is something inherently wrong with the budget every year that has a surplus of the same dollar amount. That leads me to believe that these particular accounts are, you know, there's a buffer in certain line items, and I don't know why the administration's so opposed to providing another line. I mean, the budget, if you look at it, is three or four lines, three or four columns. It's not complex to add another column, and you have this information whether a particular line would be in deficit or not, and that would be helpful as a member of the council when we're deliberating. And I still don't know why we can't get that in the budget process.
I thought one, I actually thought one was prepared for you. I didn't deliver myself, but I thought one was prepared for you, so if you didn't get it, I'm not sure why you didn't get it, that showed comparison from this year 16 to last year 15.
We received something, but it wasn't line by line. So in going through it, to try to figure out what that applied to is next to impossible.
Well, let me just try, let me say a couple of things. Like, for instance, look at the line for workers' comp. It shows a $270,000 surplus, right? This year. We've had other years where we've had to supplement that budget. It just depends on the claim. So we funded that again this year for the same amount. Even though it was $270,000, we may have, because we only had one small workers' comp claim, next year we may have five large workers' comp claims. So that changes. So we fund that the same.
And I appreciate that, and I know in a $162 million budget, when you're doing line by line, there's going to be some deficits and surpluses. But to arrive at the same million-dollar figure every year, that's a concern, and I've been doing this for a lot of years. And all I'm asking for the administration, not to move mountains, but to provide another column that shows me to date. So if we started the budget a week ago, I want to see as of June 15th, that line item, are we in a deficit or a surplus? That's all I'm asking for.
You can get that at the end of every month. We can give you a report at the end of every month.
I know, could've, would've, should've, would've.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, right.
It never happens.
Right, yeah, okay.
Right. I mean, so.
I mean, the health insurance budget this year, we have to supplement it by 500. Last year, we had a surplus in that line. So it's just circumstances based on rate increases and people that change plans, and we don't always have that information of budget time, so we make an allowance to try to account for the increase in the budget, and we make an estimate of the budget, and sometimes we come in closer than other times.
Right.
But we don't change our budget every year based on the fact that this year we had a surplus, because next year it could be a deficit.
You don't, but any wise person would say if every year you're in a deficit in a particular line item, there's a concern with that particular line item.
But I don't think it is every year we're in a deficit that particular line, other than the police overtime, which is probably always a deficit.
We don't know that, because every year, all we get is a list saying, okay, we're going to transfer a council, and for the most part, we ask questions, but we transfer.
So if you'd like to see a list now of every line item, I can give you that list.
Well, it's late now, because I'm not going to vote for this tonight until we do get a list, and I haven't asked this just recently. This is probably the last couple of budget sessions that I've asked, and we were told by the budget director, the former budget director, that that would be included in this year's budget. And I realize it was a change in the administration, but, you know, when you're making an agreement, you should follow through.
Yeah, like I said, I saw the documents prepared for you. I didn't realize it was not exactly what you were looking for. I didn't prepare the document, so I thought it was what you wanted, but.
Well, I could show you the document. If you could make heads or tails, that document to the budget.
If it wasn't what you wanted, obviously, you know what you wanted and what you didn't.
Right. It doesn't suffice.
But if you have any questions about any particular line, I mean, just to go over them briefly, a lot of the line items had utilities were in surplus because the oil prices were so low. That's why a lot of those utility lines were over budget. The Health Department was over budget because the Health Director left. The Library was the same, the Library Director left, replaced by a lower-paid person. My office, the Finance Department, the Procurement Director left, that's why there was surplus there.
What about the salary for fire?
That's probably, I think there were unfilled positions.
Unfilled positions?
Yeah. I got that number right from the Fire Department, so I think it's.
Right. So here we go again. You know, in the budget process, we say, we're going to hire new police, new fire. It goes unfilled, and at the end of the year, without any public fanfare, we take the money that should have been for six firefighters, and we transfer it to overtime.
But I think that we're extenuating the circumstances of why sometimes positions don't get filled.
And it's not the first time.
Oh, I know.
This happens all the time, and that's why I asked in the budget, I said there were a number of vacancies. I said, there were a number of vacancies more than the last previous five years in this year's budget. And I asked for a breakdown. Why do we have so many vacancies? Because in my previous experience with vacancies, is if they're not filled, that is also used as a buffer to take that money, transfer it, and use it for one of your other pet projects or something else that you might have funded in the budget that didn't have enough money.
Well, I think when the budget is prepared and they put in money for vacancies, the intention is to fill them. If it doesn't get done, there's other circumstance that have prevented that. I don't think it's the intention to leave the position unfilled. That's, that's my take on it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Council Marks. Chair recognizes Council Falco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Baker, for your report. Right here.
Okay.
You had mentioned about getting the report on a monthly basis.
Right.
And I think that's what we need. I know when I was in the school committee, that's what I recommended, because there was virtually no budget reporting until we got to the budget time of year, which was in May-June timeframe. And I think, you know, what we should have here is, we should have budget-to-actuals on a monthly basis. It makes complete sense. We should be monitoring the budget on a monthly basis to see, you know, how things are, you know, unfolding as we progress through the year. The budget process shouldn't be just in June. It should be on a monthly basis where we follow it, each of us, so we can see where is money being spent, how the accounts are being spent down, and, you know, whether or not, you know, we should be allocating things differently in years, next year or the year after that. So I think, I'd like to see budget-to-actual reporting that we get on a monthly basis. I think it'd be beneficial to all of us to actually keep our eyes on the numbers and to see which way we're going and to see, you know, how we end up at the end of the year when we actually get the budget.
It's very easy to do.
Okay, great. I definitely think it's the way, the way we need to head. The budget process should be a process that we look at every month. It can't be just in that May-June, or sometimes just June timeframe. So if we could get that on a monthly basis, I think that's something that we desperately need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very easy.
Thank you, Council Falco. Council Caviolo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Ann, I agree with Council Marks. I mean, this was something that I've asked for, from my first budget over here, and I didn't ask for it this year, because Louise Miller said that this, you know, the budget would be adjusted to that. But every other year, I've asked for an actual budget. So we know, again, you know, we shouldn't have to be doing this. I mean, these numbers are, like I said, these numbers are here every year, and they should be factored into the budget. So we know to allocate more money at departments that need them, so we don't have to play this game at the end of the year. So and I agree with Council Falco also, we should get something on a monthly basis showing, you know, where we're either overspending or underspending, so we know how to react.
Sure, I understand.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Caviolo. Vice President Largo Kern.
Thank you, President Del Russo. Ms. Auditor, I just want to say that every time we've asked for actuals, you've always provided them to us. And I think that's, we were talking about the doc, we did receive actuals, but it is very hard to make heads or tails of it. It's in probably six font, and then it has original budget, budget adjustment, net activity, reimbursement balance. So it is, it is very hard to comprehend. So I too would like to see an actual for 2016. It's great we have the appropriation and the actual for 2015, but in a budget, we probably should see, whether it's a monthly basis or at least at the budget time, we should see an actual for 2016, so we know where we'll go, and we even know in advance what transfers will be made. With regards to that, if we could, if we could make a motion that we always get our final budget book sometime over the summer, usually in July, if we, in that final budget book, Ms. Clerk, if we could have, if we could have in our final budget book, the actual for 2016, that will be the close of the year, so then we'll have those four, that one extra column in our budget book come July, I think that will help us for next year. With regards to this, when you do look at the actuals that were provided, I believe five to ten days ago, if you look at the overtime for the Police Department, which we're making a transfer either tonight or next week of four hundred and sixteen thousand, that is the biggest deficit that we're seeing on the two, you know, where we're transferring that one point one million, two. We have that four hundred and sixteen thousand. But on the actuals, it shows that we're actually in a deficit of six hundred and six thousand.
When I request the transfer, we just requested to one of the salary lines. So that's the net of all of their salary lines, four hundred and sixteen thousand. So if you look at all the salary lines together, that's what it comes with. The overtime was the biggest portion of that, which was seven hundred and sixty thousand, I believe. But they had surplus in other salary lines. So we only have to cover, your vote is salary and expense when you vote the budget, so we only have to transfer it into salary. And then, so we just voted to show one line salary.
So the other couple hundred thousand is being transferred within the department itself?
Within the department. We'll make transfers within the department to cover the deficits and take it from where they have surpluses. They may have had surplus in court time, you know, other items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Council Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Ms. Baker, thank you very much for your work on this budget and for preparing this document. Are there any other accounts other than those listed on this list that are in deficit?
No, we have to cover all the deficits. If we don't cover the deficits, we'd be required to raise them on the next tax rate. So these are all the deficits.
These are all the deficits. These are all the accounts that have a deficit.
So that we had to come up with, so we had to cover the million, one twelve, and we had, we were fortunate enough to have enough surpluses in other accounts. I wasn't sure we were going to have that when we started, but.
Are there any other accounts that have a surplus in them other than these?
Oh, sure.
Do you know offhand what the figure is for that surplus, less the one point one million?
I mean, that have, other accounts that have surpluses?
Yeah, the total amount of a surplus account minus what you'd like us to transfer.
There may be some surplus, I mean, the overall, the overall police budget may be a surplus, the overall operations of police may be in surplus. There may be surplus in some of the DPW divisions, other we need to use to cover the deficits. I don't, to top my head, I don't know which ones.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Knight. Council Marks?
If Ms. Baker is able to get us that information that we requested, I would respectfully ask that we table this until next week, and until we get the responses back from the administration. My other, my other point is also, Mr. President, these are the ones that, the transfers that are coming before us, because it's a requirement under the state statute, right?
Then we can't, we can't end the year in a deficit, right?
Right.
Except for snow and ice, we can end the year, if it's snow and ice and a deficit, court judgments, we can end the year in a deficit.
Right, but there are certain accounts within, within the budget that you could do transfers without coming to the council.
I can transfer within, within operations or within salary.
Right. So we're not even seeing the list of other things that may be year after year transferred, and that's why it's important to have that actual in there. So we're being presented a list of maybe fifteen, twenty transfers. There may be another fifty or sixty transfers that are taken.
We make transfers all year.
Right. And that would be helpful for us to know as a council.
Yeah.
You know, the mayor sets the budget, and we actually sign off on the budget. So that's why this is so important, and we've been sold the bill of goods, we're going to see it year after year.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I would ask that, a motion to table until we get the budget call, line item column that we asked for with actuals.
Then the, any other, no, if we table it, no questions go out?
You go out right there with Ms. Baker.
Right.
She knows what we asked her, so if she wants it next week.
You want every department, every department's budget by line item.
Right. So a motion to table.
On the motion table by Council Marks. All those in favor? All those opposed? Not may as opposed, Madam Clerk. Sixteen dash five sixty-six offered by Council Knight. Be resolved, the city administration contact the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the purpose of having pedestrian crossing sign at the corner of Route sixteen and Boston Avenue repaired, Council Knight.
Mr. President, this site is actually outside the jurisdiction of our community. However, I believe it does lie on the Somerville and Arlington, I mean, the Medford and Arlington lines. So I'd ask that DCI be stricken from the resolution, and we replace that with our state delegation, Representative Garvelin and Senator Jalen.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries. Sixteen dash five sixty-four offered by Council Marks. Be resolved that the report of the first special meeting of the Medford City Council held on Saturday, June eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven AM be approved. Counselor, there's no need to approve a report, because they were minutes of the meeting, and we've just received those minutes. There's no committee report. It was a special meeting of the Medford City Council. So if you want to have the minutes approved, we've just received them on our desks, I hope, today. And so we have actual minutes of the first special meeting of the Medford City Council that are on our desks. I didn't offer this. I don't know who offered this on my behalf. I didn't offer this. Under suspension? I didn't, I didn't offer anything under suspension. Receive sixteen five six seven six four, to receive and place on file. We do, councilors have, that we received on our desks from the meetings on Saturday and yesterday, records of those, both of those city council meetings. So we have actual records of the meetings, minutes of the meetings, and then there'll be a place for approval in a subsequent meeting of the Medford City Council. We have one more, Madam Vice President. Sixteen dash five sixty-seven offered by Vice President Largo Kern. Be resolved that the Medford City Council take a vote to move forward and appeal the decision made by the Metford Board of Appeals on Locust Street project. Madam Vice President. Boy, I forgot about that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, President Del Russo. I think Council Marks was going to offer this as well, with regards to meeting yesterday. We did meet in executive session, and then after executive session at our special meeting, we voted to choose an attorney, which was Attorney Gavin Cockfield. We voted seven in the affirmative. The mayor did approve twenty thousand to be put into the budget with regards to initially hiring that firm that he works for and that attorney. We also voted for point, point people, which would be President Del Russo and myself, to be in communication and to advise the council on the steps moving forward. Everything else, I believe, has to stay in executive session, so we really can't comment on, you know, our deliberations. But we do need to take an official vote to actually appeal for the ruling of the Board of Appeals, and I'd like to move that forward. I think that's something that's been discussed in length over the last two meetings. I brought it up two weeks ago, and then for it to be discussed, and we can allow residents to speak. And then we had a full public meeting last week where we heard, you know, testimony for hours, and I think it's very clear how the council feels on that and how the residents, obviously, they have to, the residents and the abutters have to file their own appeal. But as far as the council's concerned, I'd like to move forward and take a vote with regards to the city council, the Medford City Council filing an appeal inland court against the ruling of the Medford, City of Medford Board of Appeals on the decision relating to Locust Street.
On the motion of Vice President Largo Kern, Madam Clerk, please call the rolls.
Council Caviolo.
Yes.
Council Largo. Yes. Council Knight.
Yes.
Vice President Largo Kern.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, with the vote of seven, the affirmative, none of the negative. Motion Karen, offered by Council Falco, be resolved that the street paint at Duggar Park and surrounding streets be discussed. Council Falco.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's actually street paving.
Paving, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I scribbled it quick, my fault. I received a call last night, or actually, a number of calls and messages regarding paving that was done last night in a, actually, it was, they were actually digging up the road over by Duggar Park last night about eleven o'clock. And it seems rather late to be doing any type of roadwork, but no one in the neighborhood seemed to know anything about it. So if we can get a report back from the administration as to why the work was being, being done so late, basically, why it's being done, when it's going to be finished, and why the residents did not receive any type of notification regarding the roadwork. I mean, to be doing roadwork at eleven o'clock at night seems to be unacceptable. So it'd be nice if we could get some answers from the administration or from the Department of Public Works with regard to why that work is being done.
I know someone else who was recently serenaded by a jackhammer. So on the motion of Council Falco, Council Scott Pelley.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, Council Falco. I believe I brought this up a few weeks ago with public utilities and doing work. And one of the questions that I had, if we can, if we could just add to that, the Engineering Office and Mr. Karen's office, because from what I've been told, it has to go through their office to get approval. And I'd like to know if they are getting approval, because I still haven't heard yet from that original request, that who approved that work on a school night at ten-thirty at night from National Grid. Thank you.
So on the motion of Council Falco, as amended by Council Scott Pelley, that we also request a reply from the Engineering Department and also Director of Public Works, Karen's office.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Caviolo.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. So on the motion of Council Falco, all those in favor? All those opposed, as amended by Council Scott Pelley? Motion passes.
Mr. President, under suspension?
Well, we're under suspension. Somebody.
If gentlemen, you're ahead of the.
Or like to make a statement?
Right.
There he is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
John Sado, one ninety-seven Spring Street, Medford. I'm before the city council tonight for myself and the members of the community and taxpayers of the city of Medford. Supposedly, February fifteenth of two thousand and fifteen, I pick up students at different locations, but somehow never received a ticket parking in Medford Square, or was never given a ticket or never sighted. I got a notice today in the mail, eighteen months later, that it was overdue. Now, February of two thousand and fifteen, this is June of two thousand and sixteen, okay? There's a scam going on with this parking things here, okay? I asked to see a picture and stuff like that, there was nothing there. I sat in Medford Square numerous times and watched people pull up, not paying parking, and these guys are walking or girls are walking right by cars, okay? In nineteen seventy-six, I took every parking meter down in this city, working for the city, okay? Parking meters were gone in nineteen seventy-six. We stored them all down, down the city yard, and they were gone. A few years later, they built a parking garage, which was deplorable and poorly constructed. But I was the gentleman that went through the parking garage. Seriously hurt, hip replacement, hand surgeries, back surgeries, and shoulder surgeries. And never once, any city official, except one, Robert Penter, asked me how I was, okay? Mayor McGlynn, Paul Geer, nobody ever asked me. Everything come out of my pocket. I could have sued the city for big money, but I saved the taxpayers a lot of money, okay? All right? But this is what's going on. This is a scam with this parking thing. I tell the people in the city of Medford and outsiders, don't pay these tickets, because they got nothing to do with the registry of motor vehicles, okay? I work as a driving instructor. I own a driving school. So I know the laws of the registry and everything. I'm out there seven days a week, teaching the youth of this city and other cities, okay? It's a scam that's going on with this parking thing. They were very arrogant today, too, okay? I've been down to the police station numerous times complaining about this also, but this is what's going on in this city. I'm hoping some officials are not getting kicked back from this parking, parking garage, I mean, parking situation that's going on, because it's just a scam. And the senior citizens are getting taken left and right in this city. I see it every single day out there, okay? I just appreciate your time, taking me the time to speak tonight, but something's got to be done about this. Get rid of it, okay? The taxpayers lost three times, all right? Three times they lost. Got rid of the parking meters years ago. You built the garage, which had to come down. They built it, taxpayers' money, it had to come down. And three, now they're doing with these parking meters again, okay? So something has to be done. You people got to park in the squares, too, from time to time. If the meter runs out, you're going to get a ticket yourselves, okay? Some of them, they give out tickets left and right, and let me tell you, even judges have to pay their tickets over there, okay? Because I worked out of the court system for a while, too, and judges asked me to see if I can go straight and tickets out, and I says, you can't do it. Can't do it. They gave me the money I had to pay, all right? So this is what's going on. I hope this is a wake-up call tonight with this parking meters, because it's a deplorable situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. On the motion of Vice President Longo Kern to return to the regular order of business, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries, 16-561, petition by Robert C. Cappucci, 71 Evans Street, Medford, Mass, to address the council vote, Evans Street et al. repairs. I like you, Yusuf et al. Very nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's Robert L. Cappucci. But, Mr. President, if I could, there's another citizen, Mr. Eric Reed, who wants to speak, and it's a similar issue that he wants to speak on. So if he could go first, if I could request that, and then I'll speak after him, if that's possible?
No, you're up on the agenda next, and we need to follow the agenda items.
All right, Mr. President.
Unless somebody will table it and take it off the table.
President Longo Kern, did you have an alternative?
Just if somebody would table it and then you take it off the table. But, motion to table. All those in favor?
So I'm going on the table and off the table.
Off the table.
Thank you.
Miss, Madam President?
Odes in favor, all those opposed, motion matters tabled. Paper 16-562, petition by Eric Reed, 158 Jerome Street, Number 1, Medford, Mass, to address the council on his petition on Medford infrastructure.
Good evening, everybody, City Council. So I was wondering if you had received a response from the Engineering Department regarding our petition? You passed the motion requesting a response. No, is that why?
I don't believe we have, no.
All right. So a couple of weekends ago, as mentioned over here, there was a committee of the whole budget hearing, right? And I'd like to, so here's some salient points made by the head of the Engineering Department at the meeting. She said there are no construction projects this summer. Winthrop Street and South Street were bid but will not be done because the bids came back too high, so they're not going to be done. There's a group of seven streets that are going to be done but have not been advertised for bid yet. The Engineering Department head will provide City Council with a list of seven streets proposed for work. Boston Ave. was mentioned. The head of the Engineering Department informed City Council that Gurley will wait because it's not urgent. Pinkerton, Paris have been designed. These streets need gas work and need Chapter 90 funding, but no money is in the budget. And the Complete Streets Program is being developed. So my comments is, you know, amazingly, the first point above says it all. There are no construction projects this summer. The next line mentions Winthrop and South Streets, which were bid but will not be done. It would be interesting to find out the work planned for these streets, because streets like Evans are clearly falling apart and will not withstand another winter. This is not a small matter, as it concerns daily access to essential life services, like getting to work, being able to drink, bathe, and being protected from fires. The third line mentions seven streets that are going to get done, and that a list of these streets will be provided to Brianna by the Engineering Department. Boston Ave. was mentioned, which is curious, because it was done last year, so. And the commitment to do road work contradicts her first statement that there are no construction projects this summer. Gurley and Dwyer and Evans have been waiting for a long time. If they were urgent last year, why are they no longer urgent this year? I believe Paris and Pinkerton are the streets being designed by a consultant, which were due for construction in 2014. Now we are being told the design is finally complete after three years or more of delays, but we don't have Chapter 90 money to fund the construction. If we don't have Chapter 90 money for Pinkerton, Paris, how are we going to do the seven streets to be listed by the Engineering for City Council? Sidewalks are important, but they're a small fraction of what needs to get done. We cannot abandon the big picture for the sake of sidewalks. Sidewalks also need implementation. So the answer is actually leave more questions. What this actually means is that all the work that I was doing last summer was stopped, and Engineering has spent almost a year to hire somebody full-time, I guess, to not work, because they're not planning on doing any constructions this season. It doesn't make any sense. And you are the councilors to City Hall and the mayor. It's extremely important to get answers now before the season is a total loss. It doesn't look like Engineering has made any preparations for construction yet, in spite of having all winter to do so. The construction season is flying by now, and nobody seems to be concerned. We must grapple with this issue and stop sidestepping it if we want good planning and construction from City Hall. Now is the time, because another season lost is a travesty to the taxpayers. It's a pretty sad state of affairs, especially for me, because I know we can still get a lot done if we start now. I know I can make a difference, and I've offered to help the situation. I was hired as a temp engineer last summer, and we got a lot of work accomplished. I know I had to get much of the essential implementation done. I am available and willing to work as a private consultant, temp work, that is, not permanent employee, on essential engineering tasks. There is no reason we can't get a lot done this summer if we start now. To complain for my part, gratuitously is one thing, but I have also offered to help Engineering work on implementation, and if you read the offer, I submitted to the mayor, at no cost to city taxpayers. As a resident and taxpayer, I do care about Medford. My offer is still on the table. If we work as a team, we can make a big difference. And now I'd like to let Rob talk, and if you want, I can come back after and explain a little bit about my offer and the implementation part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Knight. So is paper 16-562 now being stopped and paper 16-561 being started? I'm confused about what's going on here right now.
Mr. Cappucci, speaking on Mr. Reed's paper.
Is that what?
Or you want to bring?
We've got the same issue, sticking directly to Evans Street.
Okay, so you have your paper that's still, you want removed from the table, then?
Yeah, Mr. Reed, if you'd like to finish, we're going to...
Okay, you want me to finish the whole thing? What I have to say next?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I mentioned, you know, I can help Engineering work on implementation at no cost to city taxpayers. So some of you, you know, some of you may be under the impression that I was angling for a full-time position at City Hall. That is not my intention at all, and it never has been. What I propose is, I offer to perform engineering services related to planning and construction of water, sewer, drainage, and roadway systems as a private contractor to the city of Medford, as any other of these contractors operate. Hiring me as a private contractor, and I've checked this with the MWRA, hiring me as a private contractor for planning and construction services enables City Hall to build estate funding sources directly for my services. It's a simple matter for me to keep track of the time I spend on different projects. And invoicing is normal operating procedure for all eligible engineering projects. This is not something unique. I'd like to mention again, the INI budget of $5 million is 75% grant. The Chapter 90 funding is 100% grant, and there's $1 million sitting there, waiting for us to propose eligible work to get that funding. Evans Street would be a perfect example. And so what I want, basically, is to get all this work started and have a successful construction season, so we don't have streets falling apart and people really being put at risk. And the benefits are clear. I can start working tomorrow if the mayor gives a go-ahead. I know what needs to get done and how to do it efficiently with Mark Shayna. The city gets an engineer using state funds. I mean, I've been trying to be creative to resolve these things and not impinge on your budget requirements. And I came up with this proposal, which I think is very beneficial to the city. You do not have to make long-term commitments, as I will be part-time, and you get 100% utilization, no downtime, no sitting around without any work to do. And these are all very important, visible tasks. Water, roads, sewer, drainage, they're indispensable for any municipality. The mayor will get good projects completed this season, and if we accomplish what we need to get done, you know, the mayor will be very popular. It'll be good for her. I also have, I'd like to point out, I have strong connections with the community, and I'll be able to bring the mayor a lot of support and goodwill and foster communication and cooperation between the community and City Hall. I mean, I can go on, but at the end, I see a lot of good being generated if you accept, you know, this proposal. I would much rather be working hard, serving you well, than being stuck complaining. I hope I have expressed myself clearly. It would be an honor for me to serve City Hall loyally in all engineering activities that are needed in Medford at virtually no direct cost to city taxpayers. I apologize if I have said anything that may offend anyone, and hope you consider my offer positively. I'm looking forward to meeting with you to discuss what I have presented here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Reed. Counsel Knight.
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Reed, thank you very much for your well-thought-out comments. However, the fact of the matter is this, Madam President. The Medford City Council isn't the personnel department for Medford City Hall, and the Medford City Council is not the procurement office for Medford City Hall. So we don't have the ability, even if we wanted to, to hire an employee in the Engineering Office. No, we have the ability to issue an RFP for a contract that's required under the public bid laws in order to get a contract that'll work for the city, Madam President. So as such, I can certainly appreciate where the gentleman's coming from, but it's really a matter that's outside council purview. It's really a matter that the council has no ability to effectuate any change on in terms of our vested powers, Madam President. So as such, I'd move the matter to be received in place on file.
Can I make a statement? If you have, I mean, City Council is basically here to counsel City Hall, so you do have the ability to make a recommendation to them. I know you don't have the ability to do the hiring yourself, but that would defeat the purpose of your existence if you say you have no obligation to make counsel. That's what I would have to say to that remark.
My role would be that the Medford City Council is the legislative body of the city of Medford.
Thank you.
The administration is the executive.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Penter. I live at Zero Summit Road, and I'm a member of the Saka Squad. I want to thank Mr. Reed for coming forward here, because I think he's bringing to the attention of our public the fact that our streets and the needs of our streets, whether they be sidewalks, whether they be curvings, whether they be the underground infrastructure, is in desperate need of, how can you say, revisiting. You folks haven't seen this, and not to digress, but I will digress. Going back to last year during the campaign, this was a big issue. People in this community are very concerned about their streets, the potholes in their streets. The people are not getting any response back. I mean, the city now signs on to this quote-quote-unquote Complete Streets Program. Do a street. Get a street done. Don't get it to the point that it is right now, that the people are coming up here, and I know there's going to be another gentleman that's going to come up here, and he's going to talk about a street that the city owns that they haven't done, that was part of a $14.4 million project, and it just doesn't make any sense. You know, the council has asked, and you, Acting President Marks, you would ask for an annual monthly go-along to see where the budget's going. And I think last year Louise Miller said, she said it twice, right here at this podium, she would have never presented the budget the way it's been, as it's been in the past, and she would put your wish list in there, and she would show the cost and where and how it would go. Well, I think you folks do have an obligation as city councils, because I know I accepted it when I sat on that side of the rail, to have monthly meetings, or have meetings with your department to find out exactly what's going on. The rumor around this building, that the city engineer, she's on a six-month to one-year review for her job performance. True, false, or indifferent, I don't know, but that's the rumor running around the building. But whether it's a rumor or not, the fact of the matter is this, the streets in this city are in desperate need of not only repair, but a review. The Public Works Department, their short chains would help, but at the same time, their direction is not being geared into the purpose of what it's there for. What's the most important thing that's affecting this community right now on a daily basis? All of a sudden, they just got through painting the Stripes, the crosswalks and the Stripes. School is out, and the Stripes are done. This should have been done when school was in, prime time of the year. It used to be done twice a year. It used to cost $60,000 a year when Mayor McGlin was here. Now he's only been out a year. $60,000 a year to paint the crosswalks and the Stripes, okay? Twice a year. It's a public safety issue. Why not? But look at your streets. Look at your sidewalks. Look at your curving. Mr. Reed brought, I think, some excellent points forward, not to sit here and advocate for him to be an employee in the city, but he did work for this city, and he did do a good job, and he did bring these attentions to the Engineering Department, and we're still talking about him. After the fact, still talking about him. It's just symptomatic on how this entire administration operates. After the fact, no public acknowledgement, and this council, you know, I don't know what this mayor thinks of this council, but it's quite obvious she doesn't have you in high regards at all, because you folks have absolutely no idea as to what's going on outside this building. You do the best you can. You read it in the newspaper. You talk amongst yourselves. But unfortunately, if this city keeps going in the direction it's going, it'll have no direction to go in. It's going to be out of control, and it is out of control right now. Locust Street is the best example of telling you what's happening in this community, an out-of-control situation. Just think of it. You folks had to go hire your own attorney to sue the Board of Appeals, and for which this mayor thought this was a great project here in the city. It's going to add a wonderful new neighborhood, and we're excited about it. We are so excited about it, it's going to cost you hundreds and thousands of dollars, because now the council is going to sue your Board of Appeals that your city solicitor has to defend, and the neighbors have to go out and get their lawyer, for they have to pay for it, because they're not going to get pushed around by City Hall, who never asked them to be part of it or to be included. It's like a bad street. If you don't fix it, it gets worse. Well, it's the public relations of this administration. It's worse now than it was when it started, and it's not getting any better. And I would hope that this Medford City Council puts its foot down and tells this mayor that before you do anything and go forward, we want to be a part of it, and our city streets, we want to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Penta. I'd like to recognize Council Vice President Longo Kern.
Thank you, President Marks. I want to thank Mr. Reed. I believe you were here a few weeks ago, and you gave us a large packet, and I have been able to review that and go through it, and I think it's kind of educated me personally, and I know some of my other councils have reviewed it. It's educated me on different problems in the city, different streets that either have been started or went out to bid or have been reviewed. or have been reviewed that I was unaware of. So we were able to ask, I think, better questions when we did meet with the engineer a couple of weeks ago. I think one of the main things the engineer's office is working on, which I believe is, you know, a great initiative, and it's something that we should be proud of, is the complete streets. But I am extremely concerned with regards to the lack of construction projects or any at all this construction season. I mean, you can do construction from April, May until October, maybe November if the weather holds up. And when you talk about Dwyer and Gurley, who had, I believe, two water main breaks in the last year, we obviously have some issues there that need to be fixed. But then we get the response that...
There's no money.
No, that we got the response on Dwyer that it wasn't urgent. And I find an issue with that. And then I was able to question more on Evans, Pinkert, and Parrish Street. I know Counselor Scarpelli had issues with Parrish Street. That's where he grew up, so he was questioning on Parrish Street. And to have those streets, people know those streets need to, we know those streets need to be redone. And we know they were evaluated multiple years ago. And those construction projects probably should have been done two, three years ago. And now we're still at a place where they're not going to be done this year, pushing us to 2017. That is, for me and for the residents, extremely, extremely frustrating. You know, we need to pass a budget next week, but it's going to be very hard for me to pass a budget after driving down Evans Street maybe two weeks ago after the residents spoke and kind of going down Evans Street nice and slow. I mean, it is down to the bare-bones rock.
Imagine if snow is on that street and they try to plow it.
It's not safe. It should have been done. I don't, I think it's been 65 years since it's been done. And I believe I got an email from, somebody, a resident from Pinkert Street today, same type of situation. So for construction projects and Chapter 90 funding to be available and us not to take advantage of it, number one, we need to spend some more time to get these done, or we're understaffed in the engineer's department.
Well, what you need is people to get the paperwork ready and run the streets and measure everything up to apply for the eligible funds.
Yeah, and I think that's, in the past years, it's information that I, you know, wasn't privy to even know to ask. And I think it's even after reading your packet and reading some of the work that has been, you know, has been in the works and needs to be done over the last four or five years. It's very discouraging and it's very upsetting. And it's too bad for, you know, I keep telling people when they email me about streets lately because this is kind of catching on to the residents. Multiple people from Evans Street have now contacted me. It's, I keep saying, it's a shame. It's really a shame that we have Chapter 90 funding. We should be putting money, our own money into construction projects to repave streets. You can't go 65 years without being repaved. We have a safety issue, and it's really unfortunate. So I'd make the suggestion that the mayor, before we meet next week to review the budget, we take a look, she sits down with the engineering department and take a look at the lack of construction jobs this season. Because, like you said, I think there is still time. We have four or five good months to do construction. There is some time that we can get a few projects underway and try to, we should be working on, if the funding is tough or the personnel isn't there, but we should still be working on multiple streets per construction season. Because like water pipes, like sidewalks, we need to put money into our infrastructure. We need to. It's extremely important, and now we're dealing with a safety issue.
Yes.
There is. The mayor, Counselor Knight, yes. I'm asking for a motion that we ask within the next weeks. We ask the mayor and then engineer's department to sit down and discuss projects that should be done this construction season and see if we can get Evans Street, whether Evans, Pinkett, Parrish, Dwyer, Gurley, we need to get some of these roads reconstructed, the water mains redone, and these roads reconstructed for the benefit of our residents.
This is contradictory to receive and place on file.
So I guess we can take a vote on which one people want to vote on. I would ask my colleague, I was at the chair. Nobody had anything to say. I wanted, so that was, Counselor Knight moved to receive and place on file. I respectfully ask him to withdraw that. I don't think there's any harm in the mayor and the engineer sitting down. And since those answers have come out since our council meeting, it is concerning, and it's something that the mayor needs to, you know, talk to engineering about, whether it's lack of staff or funds. If there's Chapter 90 funding to do some streets and sidewalks, we need to push to get that done. We need to.
So what is your motion, Madam Vice President? That the mayor sit down with the city engineer to discuss the construction projects for this coming season?
To work on, yes.
You're amending a motion to receive in place on file?
However you'd like to put it, yes.
All right. That is contradictory and cannot be accepted with the main motion.
I've asked my colleague to withdraw then his motion to receive.
And the colleague has indicated to me that he's unwilling to do so. Here, the motion of Counselor Marks, Seva. Madam Vice President, we're going to take the second motion, the amendment of, into two motions of Madam Vice President that the mayor consult with the city engineer to review the feasibility of construction projects. So on that motion, all those in favor?
On those four, at least on those specific roads too. Evans, Pinkert, Parrish, Dwyer, Gurley. If they could especially speak about those five roads, and we can try to get at least two projects underway this season.
That four roads be considered, Evans, Pinkert, Gurley, and Parrish. On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counselor Knight is in opposition. The ayes have it. On the main motion that we received and placed on file, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor Marks, Counselor Lungo Kern in opposition.
Mr. President, motion to take paper number 16561 from the table.
On the motion of Counselor Knight to take paper 16561 from the table, petition by all those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries. Petition by Robert C. Capucci, 71 Evans Street, Medford, to address the city council on Evans Street at Alia regarding repairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's actually Robert L. Capucci of 71 Evans Street. If I could just submit this petition that I collected from my fellow neighbors on Evans Street and on the corners of the street as well, Central and Lawrence Street. Basically, we, the undersigned residents in the boroughs of Evans Street, demand our water pipes fixed and street repaved as promised by the city of Medford. I got 50 signatures from fellow residents. The reason you folks might have received some emails today from Pinkert Street is because, you know, with time constraints, I couldn't go down that street and get their signatures as well. But I did go down that street, and I put out a flyer with everybody's email and the mayor's as well. If I could submit that to the city messenger, please.
Submit that to the messenger who will submit it to the city clerk and make it part of the public record.
Okay, Mr. President. Thank you, but, you know, a couple of weeks ago, a fellow neighbor of mine, Sean Smith, and I came up. And, you know, we discussed this street, and, you know, it was, what's the word? It was mutually agreed that Evans Street, I mean, I don't want to rehash everything that was already said here tonight, but Evans Street is in one of the top five of direly needed repairs. Counselor Vice President Lungo Kern is exactly right that this street, I mean, let's put that into perspective. 65 years it's been since this street has been repaved. You know, with the water pipes underneath them, who knows if we're drinking lead? It's way past time, Mr. President, which, you know, we were told that bids would go out. They would be decided on in the best possible. At this point now, my understanding is that none of these bids were decided on, which prompted me to go out, you know, after being told one thing, to go out and get these signatures. In relation to other things like, which I'm 100% for, park improvement and bringing things in there, we need to fix what we, I mean, I don't mean to be disrespectful. I think maybe a tandem project could be done to do it. But, you know, if you go and you fix the parks, it, quite frankly, it's putting lipstick on a pig, Mr. President. It's more than just the infrastructure work that needs to be done. I took my first steps of my life on Evans Street. We have residents on that street right now diagnosed with cancer who will be dead, at least one, within a year. We have people taking our first and our last steps. This is our home, Mr. President. Our excise taxes, our sales taxes, our property taxes, our surcharges on these taxes go towards keeping our home, our lives. We come home after a hard day's work to see potholes as big as the mouth of an alligator with rocks all over the street. I mean, you wonder why that sometimes, you know, people, I don't want to say it's a direct correlation, but it doesn't help when there's an opioid and a drinking problem to come home after a hard day's work and see our existence in total shambles, with streets falling apart and sidewalks falling apart. It doesn't help. These things are related, not a direct cause in effect, but it is related. It's more than just the infrastructure projects that are not being done. And when we pay all this to actually see government governing over the will of the people, we can't wrap our minds around it. You should have heard some of the comments I heard coming down the street. My neighbor across the street, her SUV two years ago sank in the sewer draining because the street around it fell apart, and she had to call AAA to get it out. Mrs. Natale told me a bunch of years back, a whole casem opened up on Evans Street, and a whole truck fell into it. And that's another thing. It's wear and tear on our police vehicles and our fire engines and other infrastructure, plowing trucks and everything else that we're also paying for as taxpayers. I mean, it's at a critical point, and I want to thank this council for bringing it up. I want to thank Mr. Reed and Mr. Penta who spoke before. And I hope that something can be done expediently because we're tired of paying to be told something and then not having it done. It's beyond comprehension. It's beyond incompetence, and it's an affront to people that have lived on these city streets in their whole lifetime. I mean, with kids playing there, with their pets and everything else. Mr. President, please use the power of this body to inspire this mayor to do what we all know has to be done or do something when the budget comes up, to jar the system and make it work for the people that you represent, who voted for you, who put you in these, on this august body, as Mr. Penta likes to say. I think another member of the community wants to speak, and I hope that, you know, I get a little passionate, but I'm not speaking up here just for myself, speaking on these for these other 50 people and all around the city of Medford too, people who don't have the time to come out to this podium. I'm fortunate to have the time, and I'm trying to articulate their passion and, quite frankly, their rage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Capucci. Good evening. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ray Scaffo, 9 Sunset Ave, and also 100 Hicks Ave as a business owner. I'm going to kind of read from a prepared statement that I had made. It's a similar matter, basically, but I think it's a little bit more serious. I would like to bring up the hazardous condition of Swan Street as a business and a homeowner of the city. I'd like to report to the city council that last winter, as I was traveling Swan Street, the main rear spring of my oil truck snapped, and a small section, a small iron section from the spring protruded through the shroud, which was the actual fender of the truck, and came within one quarter of an inch to the tank, which is a 3,000-gallon tank, which was full of home heating oil at that time. This could have caused a very serious hazardous condition. There are numerous oil trucks that travel Swan Street throughout the year, especially in the winter months. The trucks are coming and going from Swan Street constantly. The street is in dire need to be paved. With 20 tons of weight, traveling at a slow speed, you're bouncing like a rubber ball. I believe, I totally believe that Swan and James Street were part of that new DPW yard project, and it was made to be paved and never got done. So I'm asking the city council to look into this matter before a serious hazardous condition occurs. Maybe you all just should take a ride down Swan Street in your vehicle, 5 miles an hour, and you'll see how bad you'll bounce, okay? So instead of just waiting to see what's going to happen and continuous trucks going up and down there, it could be a grave situation where something could happen, where we could have a big spillage, and then we're in some serious trouble. Okay?
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
David Champion, 35 Green Hall Street, Medford, Mass. Didn't want everybody else in the truck. City streets are falling apart. We don't have the crew, the personnel to maintain them, let alone fix them. We want to fund the bubble for $2 million. Why not bond?
So Scarpelli. Just so you know that, it wasn't to be funded by the city of Medford. Just so we're clear. So I don't want you to...
It wasn't being funded by the city of Medford?
No, it wasn't.
Is the...
An RFP for someone to do it.
RFP?
Yeah, for someone to do it.
Who would pick up the bond on that?
They would pay for it. Thank you for your point of information.
Well, thank you for the clarification. But really, what I came up here for was to apologize for last week. My behavior was somewhat nasty, according to some people. My apologies, Counselor President. Some people think I offended you personally. And I would apologize to Mr. Rumley had he been here tonight. But people, we've got to start waking up. Don't forget, you work for us. We don't work for you. It seems that way because we're giving you our money. We're not getting anything in return. So you were voted on to represent the citizens for a reason. Let's stop living up to that, take care of the citizens first. And just one big suggestion. I think the council should take a vote to put a moratorium on building in the Wellington area for new residential, no matter what their size, until we have a further impact. Because like I said last week, Riverside and Locust already been sold. Some of the buildings are already being cleared. The Locust Street, from what I read by their traffic consultant, didn't consider the MGM new traffic study that's going to be required. They're saying everything's going to remain the same. Well, 490 units, 720 parking spaces, whatever. Locust Street and Riverside, another complex of equal size, another 720 cars, just to keep things, you know, smooth. Where are you going to put them all? And don't forget, our schools are basically at capacity, which is a really good thing because there's...
Point of information, Counselor Knight.
I do believe that statement is contrary to the presentation that was given to us by the school superintendent today. And the schools are not at capacity. They actually have some room for growth, so...
Well, that's good because the superintendent also told you tonight that you had 4,600 public school students. The superintendent also tell you you got more than that, that many students in the city of Medford that aren't going to public schools?
I believe the question that was asked the superintendent, how many students are enrolled in Medford High School, FY15, FY16, FY14, FY15? I believe the superintendent said he doesn't have those figures offhand. However, it's about flat. 4,600 is the estimate that I would give, I believe, was the answer that he gave to that question, Mr. President.
Right. And I'm just telling you under Chapter 72, Section 1, I believe it is, the State Department of Education, city of Medford, as of May 1st, is supposed to send in to the DOE a report on all students living in Medford and where each one of them is going to school.
Point of information, Counselor Knight.
I do believe Counselor Scarpelli at a subcommittee meeting asked whether or not the city of Medford School Department was in all aspects of compliance with state law. I believe that the response that the superintendent of schools gave us was, yes, the city of Medford School Department is in compliance with all aspects of state law, including reporting requirements. reporting requirements.
All right. Then maybe you should ask him for that report. Because technically, it is the responsibility of the school committee, and I'd hate to see Mr. Rumley have to do another case. And what I was trying to get at last week with Mr. Rumley is, faced a similar situation back in '85, '86, where the city solicitor could not represent the police department for a matter. Caught case while there was a ruling, it wasn't directly related to this case, but I brought it up there. And the city solicitor is responsible to provide legal representation to any and all units of the city of Medford. If he is in conflict, he must, the city still must provide, solicitor must still provide alternative representation. Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Chair awaits a motion. Councilor Knight?
Ultimately, Mr. President, this paper started out as a matter related to Evans Street and the paving thereof. And there was some talk that the Evans Street project wasn't going to get done, that it wasn't going to go out to bid, so on and so forth. So when that information was brought to my attention, I picked up the telephone and I spoke with Mark Shea over in the engineering division. And I'd like to just briefly read the email that he sent back to me. My question was, "Mark, what's going on with Evans Street? It's my understanding that the project's not going to go forward and the bids have been rejected." "Mr. Knight, I'm unaware of that news. It's my understanding that the contract review is complete and has been approved for award. The procurement office, the procurement office will be issuing an award letter. When received, the contractor needs to put together the required paperwork, bonds, insurance, construction schedules, et cetera. They need to sign the paperwork and return the contract to the city. And after these requirements are complete, the city will sign the contract, allowing the contractor to start the work. This project may take more than a couple of weeks, but once we receive the work schedule, we will pass this information along to you. Also, if you'd like to review the copies of the contractor's bid sheets, you can pick them up in the procurement office there, kept on file there. I believe four contractors submitted a bid for the waterworks contract. Signed, Mark Shea, Assistant City Engineer, City Hall, Room 300, 85 George B. S. Attraite, Medford, Mass. Mr. President." So it appears to me that the process of the reconstruction of the water infrastructure on Evans Street is still undergoing. And it's also apparent to me, Mr. President, based on that correspondence from the engineering department, that they are taking the affirmative steps to make sure that this gets done in fast track. So with that being said, I was just for the record, Mr. President, so that we can get back to the item that was on topic and provide it with the most up-to-date information. That was an email from Mr. Shea at, oh, about 3:30 this afternoon. Upon receipt of that email, I picked up the telephone and I spoke with Brian Karen, Mr. President. And Mr. Karen's also got back to me, and Mr. Karen's exact words to me were, and I wrote them down, because I wanted to be sure I wasn't misquoted this evening, misquoting him this "The water main and services then repaved. That is going forward. Procurement will be issuing an award letter. Then the contractor's signed. It's all on schedule." So it's apparent to me, Mr. President, that this matter is going to be moving forward. It might not be in the schedule that we all would like to see it on, but it is on a schedule. And it's my hope and my wish and my desire that this gets done before the close of this construction season. And as such, I will continue to pick up the phone and continue to contact the individuals that are responsible for ensuring that this project goes out to bid appropriately and the construction work starts. But I did want to be sure that I shared that with the neighborhood, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Vice President Lungo Kern.
Thank you. That's great news. I think Cassandra did mention that at our meeting, that it needs full construction after the water main, hopefully getting the water main done this year. And I believe she said reclaiming it, which I assume is repaving it next year. So I think that's something that we just keep, the residents keep being told the last two years. So hopefully, we are on the right track, and I would love to see it get repaved after the water main this construction season rather than next construction season, which is what Cassandra Kudelaris, our engineer, told us two Saturdays ago. I'd also like to just ask, make a resolve that we ask the mayor's office with regards to Swan Street. I too believe we, that bond, I thought Swan Street was going to get repaved. If we could get a question to the administration with regards to Swan Street, and, you know, if and when that's going to be repaved.
On the motion of Vice President Lungo Kern, that the, let it be sent to the administration, and they report back to the Medford City Council on the progress towards paving Swan Street. On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The records of the tabled records of the meeting of May 31st, 2016, will pass to Councilor Knight. Mr. Counselor, how do you find those records?
Mr. President, I addressed the clarifications that I needed to be addressed. I find the records in order, and I move for approval.
On motion for approval, those records by Councilor Knight, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Records of the meeting of June 14th, 2016, will pass to Councilor Marks. Mr. Counselor, how do you find those records?
Motion to table, Mr. President.
On the motion of Councilor Marks to table, the records of June 14th, 2016, all those